All right, we are live. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oilin'. I'm Coach Ashley. We are joined today by founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin and team member Kim Ming. We're all here to help you today. You're going to be hearing from all of us, and we want to hear from all of you. There's a couple of things that we're going to cover here right at the very beginning, just to make sure that everything is clear and easy and understandable for you. And then we're going to get into your questions. If you submitted questions ahead of time, we've got a list that we're going to roll through here. And if you are here today and you want some live help, go ahead and put your requests in the Q&amp;A box. Okay, and let us know where you're coming in from. Shelley says it's chilly in Florida. Hey, friends in North Dakota, how cold is it where you are? Please tell them.
Frigid is the word the weatherman used.
What did you say the wind chill was, Kim? Like negative 18 or something?
Yeah, yesterday the air temperature was negative 18, and then we have wind chill on top of that, so it was about a negative 28.
Oh, my God. You guys, I would live in like a marshmallow suit inside. So it's chilly everywhere, right? DC, Florida, Pennsylvania, and here in Brooklyn, it is also quite cold. Oh, Shelley, 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 60 degrees is cold in Florida. You're right, it is. And we love you, but also... Oh, goodness.
Shelley, we're all coming to visit you.
That's right. That's right. I'm planning February.
Extra rooms.
Planning February vacation right now, and I'm telling you, Florida looks really good. All right, so first, guys, again, come over to the Q&amp;A, put your questions in. If you want some help today, if you'd like for us to work with you on something specific, this does not have to be just tech stuff. If you've got a business thing, you've got a marketing thing, we're here for all of it. No question is too big or too small. The first thing that I do want to do now, and I'll team up with Greg to do this here, because he's ready to do some demoing. I want to show you guys exactly where you can go for help. You are here right now at one of the biggest and baddest resources, right, with this weekly work session. This is where you can literally come on and get our hands on help. We can log into your account, work on things with you, all that kind of great stuff. We can bring you out, talk with you, and so on. But there's a couple of key places where you can get help right away, no matter the time of day, even when it's not noon Eastern on Thursdays. And the first one is this little question mark down in the corner of the screen. It says, "Need Help." He's waving at you. And here, you can search for anything, right? You could search for maybe how to text, right? Maybe texting. There we go. And it tells you all kinds of different things, and there's articles there. There are more details in some cases. Greg, we've got some of our video training linked up to this too, right?
I think there's a few videos that are linked in here. Most of the videos are under Help right now.
Perfect. Okay, cool.
You can't open this. One little tip is if you don't want this to like sit in front, you can click this little icon over here, this little box with the arrow, and that pops it in a new window. And then you can close this one and then go back to your way, you know, without it being in your way. You know, because some of these do get, you know, like multiple steps, so that's very helpful to have multiple tabs.
Perfect. And then there's also the Help button up there at the top, right? And from there, if you want to click it, we can show them there's a number of different resources. Oh, yeah, actually, let's see. Yeah, that setup progress bar is another place you should go before we get into the weeds. The setup progress bar, when you click it, is going to show a cute little rocket and the basic things that you need to do to set up your account. Everything has a quick little video attached to it that shows you exactly what to do. I mean, guys, it breaks it down to, you know, sort of the minutia even, so it's not like, hey, here, we're going to throw you out at sea. I hope you swim. Like, it's, we really walk through and hold your hand with this stuff. And in the Help section, you do have a lot more in-depth. This is the page here. We've got a quick reference guide that's printable. We've got walkthrough videos. There's events and RSVP and contact manager viewer videos. And then we've got this 90-day challenge, guys. We ran this, gosh, it's almost two years ago now. We did this really to help you get into momentum in your business. This is really how to start using the system and operating in a way that can create real momentum in your business. If you are not currently enrolled in some kind of a training program, such as, you know, Go For Gold that we've recently launched with Martha Crecci, you can be going through this, right? If you already have a thing that you've got and you've got support in it, then don't add another thing to your plate. But if you are clear and you've got some time, you can walk through these. You can watch these videos, and you can even pick and choose which one you go to, although they are, to be fair, they do kind of build on each other. But you can go and see if you want to learn how to set up, you know, a landing page, or if you want to know how to use this for trade shows and things like that, that's one option. And then the final one is to go over to youtube.com/getoilin'. And there, we have a playlist of these weekly work session videos. And actually, when you go to our channel, there's a little search bar over here to the side, over to the right. Voila. And make sure you go ahead and hit Subscribe when you're here. And you can search. So Greg, can you type in maybe vendor events here? There you go. We've got a whole training right there for you on vendor events. And then, of course, there's many, many others. We teach all kinds of stuff on these videos. We've got all these trainings here. And then, of course, you know, come right over here to the weekly work session. We do this every single week, and we can help you get growing. And we got tons and tons and tons of these here, as Craig is demonstrating, hours and hours and hours and hours of video. All right, fantastic. I think that's, did I miss anything? Of course, I mean, you can email us too. Of course, you guys, if you have done so, you have reached Amanda and Kim, and you've gotten to know us well. You've gotten to know how quickly our team responds and how much we love hearing from you. So, yeah, do you guys have anything else to add there with the, you know, where you go to find help?
I think that's it. I mean, as far as like inside the system, when you sign up, we do have that. It's about a 30-day email training series called Destined for Diamond that walks you through. I think, Ashley, if I remember right, it's like one day is the kind of the theory of it, and the next day is the practical application. Like, this is what you do inside the system.
Right, right. Yeah, so when you first sign up, or you could opt to add it later, if you don't have it, or maybe you signed up before we released it, it is an email-based thing. Greg has mentioned before, if you make a folder inside of your email client for these Destined for Diamond videos, or videos rather, these emails, then you're going to be able to go back and, you know, reference them sequentially if you want to. It's just another layer that's kind of walking you through bite-sized pieces of information that can help you get set up successfully and using our system effectively. Again, if you're working through another program, again, if like if you're in Go For Gold, don't worry about anything else right now. Just follow the steps of that program. But again, if you're just getting started, if you don't know what Go For Gold is, that's actually, we should mention that too, getoilin.com/goforgold. That is a full-on training program that we've co-created with Martha Crecci, a gold leader in Young Living, who reached gold in six months this year. So she's teaching in that training exactly how she was able to do that. And then we're providing the context of how to use our system along with her strategy that she used to grow her business that quickly. So, yeah, that's, yeah, that's basically it. While we're here and we have these... Minnesota, hi, Megan, you like my hat? I like to think of this as an Alabama thing, honestly, but it's really not. It's actually not. But Alabama is where I was born, and this is my link to country. I live in Brooklyn. Anyway, while we're still here on doing this, this screen share here, can we show our plans? Because we have had, Amanda was mentioning, a lot of requests for, you know, what's the difference between the plans that you offer? For those of you who don't have us yet, or if maybe, you know, you started with, you know, for a dollar because somebody said, "Do it." And now you're like, wait a minute, what do I have? What's going on here? So what you're looking at right now are our three most popular plans. If you are a serious business builder, this is where we recommend you start. I say if you are, if you're silver and below in rank, Basic is an ideal place to start for you, unless you are already really committed to being a pro-level marketer and having the capacity to create courses and things like that, that, you know, if you're a content creator, then I would go a plan higher than that. But Basic is a really great place to start. It's a dollar for your first month. It's $30, about $30 a month thereafter, $29. Of course, if you go annually, you get a greater savings. And what you have here is, I mean, it's really, it's almost everything that we have to offer in sort of a, what would you, like an introductory form, right? How would you?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good way to put it. Basic has almost all of the features. There's a few team leader features that it doesn't have. But moving up to premium gives even more capacity in those last couple of features. You know, like there's the Digital Upline Coach, for example, has some extra features where you can connect multiple people on premium and higher. And so that's kind of the high-level difference there. But I mean, they all come with a contact manager. You know, you can have as many contacts in there as you want. The difference is the marketing credits is like how many emails and texts you can send out per month. You can see that scales up as you move up the plan levels here. But, you know, there's a lot that are basically in all these columns. You know, you can import your team. You get the Digital Upline Coach. There's some team leader tools that are, you know, on the higher plans. You've got your pre-built landing pages, you know, again, more capacity. You have the feature like landing pages on Basic at limit to 10. You can build your own email campaigns. You know, there's the, all your emailing, texting, whatever comes with it. One difference down here is the two-way texting, like as you move up, you know, it's a $9 a month add-on on both Basic and Premium. On Pro, it's included as well. What this does, it gives you your own phone number so that people can, you can send and receive texts with that phone number. A lot of people use it for like a business phone number, so they don't have to use their personal cell phone, which is nice. But people can interact with it like it's a real number. I mean, it is a real number. But it comes to, you know, like if you get an incoming call, it'll ring your mobile number, so you don't have to have like a separate phone or only answer on your computer or whatever. It does dial your phone. Somebody texts you, you get a notification. But then, you know, it also comes with this unlimited text chat. There's a little chat feature too, so you can text back and forth with people. But yeah, and you know, you can look down the list here, but like Zoom, if you have, you know, like Ashley was mentioning, you know, the number, you know, kind of as your team grows, essentially, you might need more people in a meeting. So that's kind of how this, the plans grow with you over time. And if you do have some special cases where you need more than 100, we can do that. So just reach out. That's just what it's included with the plans. But yeah, they all come with basically the same website. We've had a lot of questions about that, like, what's the difference between all the different plans and the pre-built website? With these three plans, there really is no difference in the actual pre-built website. It's pretty much the same. One minor difference, well, maybe it's not minor. As you move up to premium, you can change the font and colors on the built-in themes. So that is one difference in them, you know, so you can customize them a little bit more on premium. But otherwise, like the content and everything, you get all the themes. You can put your story on there, put custom photos at the top of the theme. So those are all, you know, the pre-built themes are basically the same. One difference, like website-wise, is you get more, well, there's a website builder. So with Basic, you can create up to 10 custom pages on your site, whereas, you know, on the higher plans, you can go basically unlimited at as many pages as you want to, which actually comes super handy when it comes into the member area side of things. So, yeah, and speaking of the member area, if you're not familiar with that, kind of a quick overview of what that is, it's basically like having Facebook on your website, Facebook groups, I should say, not the distracting Facebook feed that's full of videos that, anyway. But yeah, you can, it's basically Facebook groups on your website, and a vault is, I would say, because we mentioned vaults here. That's kind of the, that's what grows up or gets bigger as you move up in plans. This is basically how many groups you can have on your website. So a vault is essentially like a Facebook group, because those can include online classes, discussion rooms, which look quite a bit like a Facebook page or Facebook group page where you've got all the posts. And then you can have resource pages as well, so you can have, you know, all kinds of that. So, you know, one popular use and one of the reasons premium tends to be popular too is that a lot of people have a vault for their new, for prospects, and then a vault for their team members. And on larger teams, some people will get to, you know, having a vault for their business builders as well. And then, you know, if you've got info products to sell as well, you can make those a vault essentially, because you can actually take payments on those, which is pretty cool. Yeah, so I think.
Can we show, can we show, because I know folks are aware that we do have some lower-level plans for people who are maybe kind of just getting their feet wet or not really quite sure. And then there are a lot of people, as of right now, who are having to look for a new website service. So just to kind of give an idea of the broader thing.
Yeah, absolutely. So, right, so these are the three most popular plans, and you can read up on the features and send us any questions. But down here, there's a Show More Plan Options link that will actually expand this quite a bit. And this is, we don't show this right away because it's a lot. But scrolling back up to the top, you can see it's added two kind of below Basic and one above Pro. And the main differences are, you know, like there's some features, there's a lot of features that aren't included with these lower plans, but they do give you, you know, the contact manager. There's limits on the contacts, you know, 100 contact limits or 200 contact limit. There's no Digital Upline Coach. You can still build landing pages, but like on Seed, for example, you can't write your own email campaigns. You'd have to move up to Starter to be able to do that. You can use the built-in ones, but you can't make your own. And the marketing credits is fairly limited. Now, you can't add on to these, like if you wanted to, you know, there's fairly inexpensive way to add on credits in the back office. So 100, you know, that's 100 emails essentially. With texting, that doesn't go as far. That probably gets you fewer than, that's fewer than 10 texts per month. But like I said, you can add on to that if you want that, but you do get the full contact manager in the back office, you know, the reminders and the to-dos and the follow-ups and all that good stuff. So, yeah, those are a couple of, yeah, the analytics is actually a lot less. Rather than seeing a detailed graph, it's just like a number. It says you've had 27 things happen on your website in the last three days, you know, so you don't really get some of that insight. But if you're looking for, you know, a pre-built website, kind of an easy drop-in, you know, like, hey, I need a website and I need it now kind of thing, these two plans are very, I think, very good and very reasonably priced at $7 and $14 a month. You know, they don't include, for example, the member area. They don't include the website page builder. But for the pre-built websites, they're fantastic and a small contact manager. So they're really kind of ideal. I mean, they even do include Zoom. If I, I mean, I'm jumping around a lot here, but like even on Seed, you can do essentially three-way calls by Zoom, which is, you know, something that's quite popular. So it does include a lot of features for $7 a month. And, but yeah, and then you can move up here. And if you need higher, if you need higher capacity, that's one other question we've had too. Some people have been like, man, I'm sending, you know, 15,000 texts a month or whatever. And that doesn't look like it'll fit here. Just, you know, send us an email. We can work up a custom plan if you've got high-volume needs. Handle all that. So these are just our pre-built options for you. So, so yeah, there's a lot of plan options available.
I think in a nutshell, guys, if you're watching this right now and you're not quite sure, you know, you're, maybe you're shopping around. You're someone who's been affected by some of the recent, you know, pending closures of website businesses as of right now. If you are committed to, if you're committed to growing your business and you are someone who is tired of seeing crickets or hearing crickets when you post on social media, right? Or when you want to let your members know that there's a promotion, and you don't want to just rely on whether or not Facebook's actually going to deliver that message to them. They're going to actually see what you're saying and what you're sharing. The, really the best place to start to be able to have that capacity is at Basic. And that's why we have that set for a dollar for your first month. And then, of course, it's $29 thereafter. If you decide, well, this is maybe more than I actually need. My commitment's not really at that level yet. It's very easy to downgrade if you need to. But it's a good place to start, and there's a lot of functionality there. Awesome. Okay, so.
Shelley, so there's Shelley and Diane. I see that your hands are raised. If you guys do have some questions, jump over to the Q&amp;A. That should be, I believe it's on the bottom of your screen. Click that, and then just insert your question into there, and then we will be able to get your question answered.
Okay. And if anybody has any questions about what we have just, you know, covered right here, definitely go ahead and ask. There's a lot that we do, but I think at the core of this, if you use our contact manager and instead of, you know, just posting something on social media and hoping someone sees it, you post something on social media, and then you go email and text everyone that you have in your list to go check out the thing on social media. Obviously, you're going to have a lot more impact and traction, and those are really kind of the core of what we do. We do have a lot of automations that you can build as you grow more advanced in how you use our system. And we do have a couple of questions about those. There was someone who asked about how long the, where did it go? If someone signs up for the newsletter, how often does it go out? Now, Janet, I think what you're referring to is the newsletter that is sort of advertised, if you will, on our landing pages. And Greg's going to show this landing page feature here. He's clicking on that now. If you see, we have a number of landing page templates that you can use. You can also apply them directly to your website if you choose, so that when people go to your URL directly, to your web address, they'll see this. And that newsletter, we see right here, right above the button. What they're referring to, or what this is referring to, is a new prospects campaign. This is something that we already have provided for you. It's already set up to go in your system, and it will send that campaign out unless you change that setting on your landing page to something else. If you want to create your own campaign to, or copy ours and edit it for yourself, you could change that. So what they get is this series of emails sent out over, what, like 11 days? So they're going to get an email every few days for 11 days, and that's, and that's it. But you should be eventually, if not already, sending out newsletters on a monthly basis, which is something you can do with a feature that we have that's called Saved Replies. You can also get your, you know, your images and things like that from third-party vendors, such as Grow Workspace, who we have a partnership now, and we're working on partnerships with other content providers in the space as well. You can bring those images and things over and actually have a beautiful saved reply, which you are then able to send out. So a newsletter isn't just a campaign. It could also be something that you send out, say, once a month.
And there is some help on that. You know, if you just search for email, for example, there'll be like sending or scheduling a bulk email or text. So we've got help on all this, all the steps that are required to go through there. You know, so you don't have to remember it all from this video.
And then Greg, if you want to go back one, there is the option of, kind of one of the questions that was brought up quite a bit last night and this morning in some chats is, can you allow, do we require people to to have to insert their information on a landing page versus do we have an option to to allow them to opt out? And the answer is yes. You can choose whether or not you want somebody to opt out when they hit the landing page moving forward onto your website. So I don't know if you want to show them where that is.
Sure, yeah. So the websites can be set up in a few different ways. There's kind of like three, I guess it's three options. So you can have no landing page, so basically it goes right to your website when somebody visits, which is totally fine. You know, there's a lot of people who set it up that way. You can also have a landing page that appears before, so they have to register in order to get onto it, in order to get your main, get to your main website. And then finally, there's an option that you can actually let people, you can still have the landing page, but there's a little link that says, "No, thanks. I don't want to register." Let me show you where that shows up here. So you can change all those landing page settings under this Customize My Site link over here in the menu, in the My Site menu. If I click on that, then you'll see there's a landing page here. You can choose, you know, these are the ones, this is a demo account, so there's a bunch of stuff in here. But so you can choose one of these landing pages or one of the pre-built ones, for example. And then you can optionally allow people to skip registration if they want to. So the difference would be, I'm not sure, I'm probably logged in on this account, so it's not going to show me the landing page. But when you have that option checked, there's a little link that shows up right underneath this button that says, "Allow me to skip," or, you know, "No, thanks. I don't want to register right now." So that's totally optional. You can also just completely shut off the landing page if you don't want it at all, you know. So it really kind of depends on your business and your workflow. You know, some people will send, they'll have the warm lead or whatever. They're almost ready to go, and they're just, you know, like, hey, can you go read my website? I want to read up on Young Living. They may or may not want people to have to register first in order to see that. Other people have a landing page on there that might have some offer. Because you can make a custom landing page that, for example, would be like, you know, download my seven essential oils or seven secrets to a healthier life or something like that. And, you know, then they would have to register there to get through. And in that case, you probably wouldn't want them to skip registration if you're giving away a freebie, for example. So there's just a number of different scenarios, and those can all be handled through here. So it's totally flexible with that, too. If you want to make a, oh, go ahead. One last comment. So you can also, if you don't want to use the built-in themed website, you can actually create your own homepage separately. So just a note there, you know, some people are looking for more personalization, or they've got multiple businesses. You know, maybe they do massage or something else to go with this. So you can make a website that is about you and your personal brand, and then make the Young Living stuff kind of a secondary thing, if you'd like to. So totally flexible. At the moment you sign up, you get one of our beautiful themed websites right out of the, you know, right out of the gate. And then from there, you can customize it as far or as little or as much as you want to.
If I can, I want to actually share, I've got the Jane account open, and we've got a couple of questions about landing pages. And I think it would be important to give people a little bit of context. We do have an option, like Greg just shared, to have a landing page that gates, which is what a landing page does. A landing page is where somebody lands, and they have to enter an information before they can get to the next page. Usually, what's on the other side is something that they want, right? So this is a newsletter with specific information. It's a guide. It's three steps to something. It's an instructional video, right? You are providing something of value to someone in exchange for their information and their permission for you to continue to contact them in the hopes of doing business with them. Okay? That's what a landing page is at its core. I'm going to give you an example of a landing page that is meant to generate leads. And this is something that's not applied to the front of a website on Get Oilin'. It is simply a thing that you would put at the end of a blog post. It's something that you could put in the About section or, you know, on a link page for your Instagram or your Facebook or what have you, in your signature of your email and things like that. So I'm going to share my screen here and show you guys what that looks like. All right. This is actually one that is, and I'm going to shorten this up because I think you guys have told me we need to do that on my big screen. Is this a good legible size?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
Scare into the broccoli-covered donut. All right, this is actually, this is a funnel that was created for the Go For Gold training. So here's what's happening here. You've got the, you've got an image here, which is fun and interesting. And we're saying something really catchy here at the top, you know, because a lot of us roll our eyes at fads, you know, especially the older we get, right? So crunchy is a fad. Here's three ways that following that fad can change your life and how you can put this trend to work for your wellness. And of course, we've got this Send My Free Newsletter down here as well. And what they're signing up for is a guide. So let's see what that guide looks like. See, this is, this is a Lead Magnet Landing Page. The purpose of this is for someone to arrive there and say, oh, yeah, I want that. And it sounds like you know stuff that I want to keep hearing. Okay, that's really the psychology behind this. So I'm going to fill this out. And now on the next page, and this was made inside of Get Oilin'. This could be a PDF. It could be a video. It could be whatever you want it to be. Inside of Go For Gold, I actually teach you exactly how I created this. And you get, you can actually like opt in and walk through it from that course. But here, we have, we've got information that's valuable, that is, you know, it's step-by-step. There's a recipe here, and then there is a contact at the bottom. Voila, right? So this is what people opt in for. Now, what happens next is there are a couple of emails that I am going to be receiving now because I opted into this page. That's a campaign, right? So we have these landing pages set up already, like Greg was showing you. And you can choose what they look like. You can choose what's on the other side, or you could choose to apply it to your website directly. But I wanted to just give you guys an idea of what that looks like, and we do go through that, setting that up step by step in Go For Gold. I think there was, Christine had asked, she would like to use landing pages, but she doesn't want to hide her whole website behind a landing page. You don't have to. Can I have my site open to see a different link to a landing page? That, yes. Okay, so what I just showed you is a landing page, just the link of that landing page. It's a different place inside of Get Oilin', where you would apply a landing page to your website. So your landing pages, you can just, when you hit View, that URL, that address, is the link to that landing page that you can share independently, and it doesn't gate the front of your website.
Yeah, as you can see here, like this has a link. So you can just, you can create as many landing pages as you want to. And then, you know, this might be a good thing, post on social media or whatever, wherever you want these things to go. You don't have to change your main website in order to have a landing page. You can have dozens of them if you want to. So, you know, different purposes. You could have your, you know, your Healthy Living funnel landing page. You could have your, you know, kids line or whatever, you know. So there's a bunch of different options there that are pretty helpful. Joy said a question kind of related to this. Can, you know, those built-in campaigns I was showing a minute ago, like under Settings, Contact Settings, and then Campaigns, there is, if you want to, you can definitely edit them. Her question was, can you edit them? And see, there's this Created By, and it'll show that it's a system-created one. If you click this little icon, it looks like two stack sheets of paper. It'll ask you to give it a name, and then you get a copy of it. It'll ask you to give it a name and then you get a copy of it and then you can do whatever with it that you want to. It'll just make a complete copy of everything. You can edit it, make it your own voice, because it's definitely really important that it sounds like you. Otherwise, it's, you know, some stuffy thing that doesn't really line up and people probably won't listen to or read it. So you can definitely edit the campaigns.
Okay, um, let's see. Tony, I I got a couple of questions from you. I'm not entirely sure that I understand what you mean. If you could, if I I'm not sure if you mean like sharing the front page of your site or sharing the link for your team to get Get Oiling. Not really sure if you could clarify for us and write back. We'd love to help you. Shelley was asking about Zoom. So our Zoom feature is Zoom meetings. What we're currently meeting on right now is Zoom webinar. They are a little different. Ours that with Zoom webinar, you have different controls. You do have controls in Zoom meetings. I know your frustration with not being able to see your entire screen because you've got all of the faces of all of the people. But you do have the ability when you set up here, as Greg is showing on this page, you can choose to automatically start the video for the host or the participants or both. I personally, when I'm setting up a meeting, I like to turn them off for everybody because I don't like, I don't like the, hey, surprise video because I'm not always walking around feeling like I want to be on camera right at the moment, you know what I mean? So you can choose to just start it for yourself or start it for everybody. And then, of course, just the way that you would also use this would be to, you know, go ahead and and let everybody know here at the start of this meeting, go ahead and mute yourself, right? And then that that helps to kind of keep things, keep things in control.
I think there is actually in the meeting, there is a mute all button, too. If you're the host, you can hit that and then it just shuts everyone off. Now, they can unmute themselves. So you might have to keep your mouse over that, depending if they want to do that. But with the video off and the mute all button, you can pretty much simulate what you've got going on here.
Right. Okay. Shelley has a question as well about the to-dos that show up on a on a contact card. She's looking for, like, is there a way to see anything other than the, like, today's action items on a contact? Can you see the future action items on a contact? Like if you have a follow-up plan applied to a contact?
Yeah, so there's a couple of different ways of going through here or viewing those, like, if you're looking at just one contact at a time. I'll just come in here and look at this. I think this one's got a lot of silly stuff on there, but these are obviously quite old, but future ones would show up here. These you can look ahead and they'll, you know, they'll go into however far in advance that you've got them set up. This is the one contact view. If you're looking for like, what's my to-do list for next Tuesday, something like that? You can find the system-wide to-do list under the my dashboard link in the context menu. And this is what comes up like right away when you load this or when you first log into the system. But here's the to-do and it's got a specific date on there. And I'll, not everyone might know this, but you can click on this and then change it to see like, okay, what's tomorrow's? Or what's next Tuesdays? Okay, here, I got to check in with myself, you know, but anyway, so that's kind of gives you the ideas. You can go through and then see what's coming up if you want to look ahead. So hopefully that answers your question.
Awesome, awesome. Um, let's see, a couple of quick ones to go through here. Is it possible to pick a different phone number once you have already picked one for the two-way texting?
Yeah, you you just have to deactivate the texting and then reactivate it. So once it's set up, so to get it set up initially, you click on this chat link. But if you have it already, of course, then that just takes you to your chat area where you can text back and forth. To switch numbers, you'd go to my account or, yeah, my account settings, click on the settings link. There's the two-way texting link here. And then, you know, down in the bottom, there's a remove two-way texting link. You can click on that. It'll say, you know, warning, your number will go away and you can never get back, whatever. And then, once you do that, it'll come back here and says, okay, you can add it on again. So that's all you would do is just like, essentially delete it and then, or you're going to remove it here and then pick another number. So you can totally switch anytime you want to.
Okay, we got a clarification from Tony. She said that she sent a team email and it had a button where the team could click to respond back, which took them back to the general Get Oiling site and not her site.
Hmm.
I'm kind of at a loss as to how how we recreate that. Tony, if if we could ask, when you sent the team email, did you send it from your, like, from your contact manager page? Or did you send it through another means from the site, such as, you know, from a vault or something to that effect? Just so we can kind of troubleshoot and help you get that right.
And another option would be if you, you could forward that email to our support@getoiling.com. And usually seeing the email itself helps us understand like where it came from.
Okay. All right. So she sent in in our chat here, the actual email that she sent. So hit reply and let me know when you're free or click the button below to send me a message. And then there was chat with me. So the the button, what was the address that you included on the button? Because that's likely what the issue was. The the chat feature inside of Get Oiling isn't something, it's not like a link that you can send to someone? Yes, edit the button. I I'm not sure, I'm not sure what this button is, honestly. It doesn't.
It might be one of the built-in templates or the saved replies. I mean, actually, let me go into the contact manager here. So like when you're sending a bulk email, for example, and you pick a saved reply, I think some of these, let me make sure this goes in the right spot, but some of these built-in newsletter templates have buttons in them. So if you don't edit the button by clicking this little, you can click on the button and click edit link. It's just going to take you, you know, to whatever your default link is. So that might be what's going on. So.
That's, maybe that's it. So Tony, did did you send a, was was it one of these templates that you used? There we go. Yeah, that's that's what it was. So so yes, you you do need to, where there is a button, it doesn't necessarily, you know, it 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 does feel like magic, but you got to try to tell the magic what to do. In this case, you can, well, if actually, one of the best things you can do here is to do, it's mail to, M A I L T O, colon, and then your email address. Right? And that's actually how you can have them click that button and then their email pops up with your email address in the address bar. Magic code. All right, cool. So Judith, quick question about Zoom. When you're using Zoom with Get Oiling, if you record, where does it go? If you're using Zoom meetings through Get Oiling, it's recording on your computer. I believe it's going to be a file called Zoom if you search for it. Is that right? Does it sound right, Greg?
Something like that. I'll put the link in the chat here. Zoom has a very nice article on their website about how to find the recording. It's usually in a folder like my documents or something like that, but kind of varies. There's a way you can go through and it varies based on whether you're using Windows or Mac, where you find the file, but that link I just put in there. And if you don't have, if you're watching this recording, there is a, if you just search Zoom, a local recording, those keywords on Google, this should pop up like right away and then it'll take you to this page.
Perfect. All right. Are the Go for Gold videos in the Get Oiling site? If so, where? Yes, they are inside of the Get Oiling site, but they are in Martha Crecci's member area because it is at 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 its core, her training on how she went to gold in six months this year. So you can get that by going to getoiling.com/goforgold. This, it is a separate purchase. But it is, I don't know, maybe quick show of hands here, if if you have that Go for Gold and you think it's a ridiculously great value for what it is, there are the hands. Oh, wow. Yeah. It's it's, we're we're proud of it. We're very proud of it and and really happy to be working with Martha. She's doing, she knows what works right now and it's simple. Like what works is actually really simple and you get to be yourself and there's nothing weird and it's not really too technical either. So can't recommend that enough. Okay, Judith is stuck on making content for the landing page and related to what you're in. So you're in module one of Go for Gold right now. FYI, I don't know if you know about this, but for Go for Gold, we have additional life coaching specifically about those modules at, what is it? It's also noon, noon Eastern, but it's on Mondays inside of Martha's Golden Six student group. But just to kind of speak to this, because I don't think this is something I have to keep off of here. When you're creating a landing page, what you put on it is wholly completely informed by what's on the other side. The whole point of having a landing page is to give someone a reason to give you permission to contact them more. Right? So what can you give them that will make them want to do that? And we do go through in that module one of really digging in and figuring out what Martha calls your fat signal, what it is that you really have to offer that's different and and that's unique to you based on who you want to help. And so then you just create something that's helpful. So think about a thing that's been helpful to you. Think about your life, you know, before you found Young Living and what's one of the more transformative things that have happened to you? Maybe it's a recipe. Maybe it's a diffuser recipe. Maybe it's, you know, here are the three things I do at the end of the day to make my life better, right? I think the the mom's peace protocol training, I think I have that on a free in-depth training in our member area that that you can actually get access to. What is it? Getoiling.com/getleads. Is that right? Let me see. That's actually, that's a step-by-step training that shows you how to build a funnel.
I think it's about member training is what you're.
That's the member area. Nope, it is. Yeah, getoiling.com/getleads. G E T L E A D S. You'll land on a landing page. Actually, let me show you real quick. I'll I'll share my screen. All right, this is where you land, getoiling.com/getleads and it's going to pop you into our member area. So think about this, right? This is one of our landing pages, right? We we use everything that we are sharing with you and trying to teach you how to use. So here's a lead generation workshop, build and launch your own lead magnet and funnel in less than an hour and we'll even show you how to use it. Right? Is that enough for you to say, yes, please show me that. I'm going to give you my contact information. Right? So have something that's compelling enough for people to want to take that next step. Keep me up to date with the latest training. Yes, please put me on your newsletter list.
Sorry, one quick comment on that. That by default, that checkbox says something like, sign me up for your newsletter. A lot of people are like, well, newsletters sound boring or whatever. You can totally change that. As you can see here, we've changed that to something else. So make it enticing, you know, if if newsletter isn't the thing, so.
That's right. So and you can change the button and everything. So here's what to do next. Check your email, right? And so here's a landing, this is, this is the custom page that we built. So we tell them, here's what you do next. And then go join the community and then enter the workshop. And then, of course, we're helping you get started with Get Oiling here as well. So there's an email that's showing up right now that's telling me that I can go and log into the member area and then start going through this module. So if you go to getoiling.com/membertraining, you can get access to that. And, you know, if you, if you're, if you are feeling stuck on, you know, what can I offer on a landing page? What, you know, what do I say? How do I set it up? That's, it literally walks you through and helps you set it up in an hour or less. All right. Maybe I picked the wrong plan. I'm an executive, some months shooting, got silver, slow going. I mean, when when you pick your plan with Get Oiling, it's not just about your leadership level, it's about the way that you market your business. If you're doing a lot of text marketing, you're probably going to want to go up a plan from from basic. Just because it's going to be a more effective use of 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 your monthly investment in your business. But, you know, again, we we help you move between, you know, really easily if you decide that you're not on the one that you need. Okay, we got a couple of of questions. Actually, I think this is, this is going to be for Marie and for Radka. How do we use the Get Oiling site to share links for our, you know, our pre-made themes, right? So if they wanted to have a Ningxia website and have a pets website and have a makeup website, how do we do that? And and no, you don't need to buy separate domains to do this.
Right, you don't have to. You can if you want to. Some people have bought them. And then these, just set them up to forward to whatever your landing or your link, sorry, your Leg Builder link or your landing page or whatever the link is on your website. So you can do that if you want to, but you don't have to get an extra domain. So there's a couple ways, I think, to talk about that. If you're looking for the built-in themes, for example, that's where our Leg Builder links come in. So down here under the Leg Builder section in the menu, we have Leg Builder links. And what these do is let you set up links and I'll just grab one of these, this one here randomly, sort of. You can set them up so that they have a special link path on your website, a special URL on your website. And you can choose, who do you want for your enroller and sponsor? What country do you want to have show up there? You know, for them, you know, for example, if you're sending it to somebody in France or whatever, you can choose France and that would probably, you know, kick in our global theme. But for the pre-built ones, whatever, it will show that specific country. So you can even choose your website theme in the landing page. Today, you know, to answer that question, like if you had a a website theme, you know, you wanted to use one that's about the pets, for example, and then you could come over here and choose one of our pre-built pamper your pet landing pages. You can totally do that and give it a link. Maybe it's not skincare. In this case, we call it pets. Or maybe it's for Canada or whatever, you know, you can choose your country. And if you just leave these blank, it'll be your own sponsor and enroller number. But you can also do this for a team member, too. So that's, there's some flexibility in here with the Leg Builder link. But when you're all done, you'll end up with a link, which I can, you know, I'm not, I won't save this one, but if I go back to my list, then there'll be the view link. And all you have to do is, you can click that or you can just right-click and copy link address, for example, and then share it with somebody. So that's one way of doing it. The setting, I think, one of the questions was about, can you control on a per landing page or per link built or or Leg Builder link basis about whether or not they can skip? Skip registration, the skip registration setting, which is again, under the custom, only available on this customize my site page. This option is only available like when you first visit your main website. This does not apply to any of the Leg Builder links or any other landing pages. None of those allow you to skip because typically, if you're building your own custom landing page, it's, you know, there's probably some offer there like, you know, but download my free guide. And it wouldn't make any sense for, you know, to you to give away your free guide for free without the email. At least we think it isn't. So this only applies to if you have this as a landing page on your homepage. The other way to do it, if you don't want to use a Leg Builder link, you can set up a separate landing page, which also has a link. So you notice when you're here in the landing pages section, there's a view column. And, you know, you can copy the link address, whatever, if you want to share it, but they all have their own unique link on your website. And if you are setting up a domain, this would be the URL that you would forward it to if you're, you know, setting up some domain there, but you don't have to do that again. But and then for each landing page, you can actually come in and choose under, I'm sorry, went too fast there, probably under the settings button over here and then click on page settings. You can show a message after the registration. You can even down here, you can tell where does the visitor go to after they've registered. So like in the example that Ashley had shared just a few minutes ago, she has it going to some special link on the website, which was for a custom page. So you can, you can do that or, you know, the my website, which just sends them to one of your, whatever your homepage of your website is, whether it's a website theme or one of the, you know, custom page, if you would have that built out there, too. So, yeah, there's more you can do here with, you know, defining which campaign they are, they receive after they register. You can even tag them so you know where they came in. So if you have a, you know, a pets landing page, for example, you can tag it as pets and then you know you have like your special interest group for pets. The one you're sending an email out to the contact manager, you can choose, I want all the people that are tagged pets, send out the pets newsletter, whatever the case might be. You can even have them go into a vault. So all sorts of cool things you can do at the landing page, but those are kind of the two big, two big ways through the Leg Builder link and then through the the landing pages feature.
Awesome. Um, let's see, a question here, a lot of going back to that, the Leg Builder link. Can, Megan asks, can you give examples of when we'd encourage our builders to get their own Get Oiling subscription versus giving them a free Leg Builder link to use? If you are calling them a builder, then they need to build their own business with their own software platform. So I, if they are actually a committed builder, I would recommend that they go ahead and get started with their own system. And you can use the Digital Upline Coach together. You can be a more effective leader with them by, you know, telling, you know, teaching and showing them how to invest in their business and how to invest their time effectively. So if somebody's just getting started and they're, you know, they're just kind of getting their toes wet, then by all means, you know, use those Leg Builder links. We we definitely see success with that with our members. You know, the folks getting their first new member, you know, through their uplines, Leg Builder link, and that's awesome. But once they, once they make a commitment, then it's time to commit to treating your business like a business and using the tools to to get it done. All right.
One of the motivations for them to upgrade to or to get their own site is that, you know, any contact, they they can't see really anything about the usage of the link, you know, they've got, you get to see all that as the person providing the Leg Builder link, you get to see the usage. In fact, if I scroll down here and click this little show activity button, it'll show you which landing pages, well, I guess this is landing pages, Leg Builder links, I believe, have the same thing. Yeah, if you click the show activity button, you can see what landing pages were used. You can see which builders are doing what, essentially. But then, say, if somebody clicks contact me, that comes to you. And now it says it comes from this Leg Builder link, but they're missing out on all that, you know. So definitely, if they're serious, they should get their own system.
Awesome. Radka gave us a shout-out team. I don't know if you read that over here in the Q and A. I wanted to keep that open. Radka, we appreciate you and 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 we thank you. Toby asked, is there a way to add videos to communications that aren't linked to YouTube? Concerned about the follow-up videos. Concerned about the follow-up videos that pop up. Is that something we put in the vault?" So, in anything that you use on GetOiling, you can provide a link to a video from really anywhere that it's hosted. You can provide a link to a video in a text or an email. You can add or embed a video to a page, to a landing page, to a, you know, anywhere on the actual website itself. It's not a communication that's sent out, also in the member area. Your concern with the follow-up videos that pop up, that's a YouTube thing. If you have a channel and it is your video and it's your channel, you do have some controls over what comes up next. So, if this is your content that you're sharing on your own channel on YouTube, you do have some control over that, and you can use that, and it'll, it should work fine for you. If you want to have true integrity and, you know, integrity of, say, premium content, or if you want to have greater control over where people could wind up after they watch a video or what they might be exposed to after they watch a video, in the case of YouTube, we do highly recommend that you use a, a paid service such as Vimeo. If you're making your own video content and you're putting it into a premium area that's only intended for, say, your members or your builders and so on. Alright, "Can you get a preview before sending?" Julie asks. I believe you're probably referring to sending an email or a text. What we would recommend that you do is, is compose it and send it to yourself first. And if you want to test it out that way, and then, and then, of course, you can go and send that to whoever else you would like.
Yeah, the best way to do that probably is through a saved reply. Under Contact Settings, there's a Saved Reply, and then when you're composing the message, you can write it up there, go through the Contact Manager, pick that Saved Reply, send it to yourself. And then, when, you know, ready for real, then you can send it out to everybody.
Yes. Megan asks, "Are we using the Leg Builder for ourselves depending on our prospect's interest?" Yes, also yes. So, you can use a Leg Builder link to give a builder a link to share that can help someone, you know, like, our website that is created for you when you join is a sharing tool. And that's why we have the option of putting a landing page in front of it so that you're able to actually see who viewed what, who clicked what, and so on, to support that process. If you're using your website as a sharing tool, like, if you're calling your cousin across the country and you're like, "Hey, I'm working on this thing. I want you to check it out for me." Go to this website, put in your information, and then I want you to read what's on it, right? So, there's a sharing tool aspect there. You can basically have the same thing work for your people who are just getting started with sharing. Or, like Greg just showed, if you want to be able to share the different thematic aspects of your website to its fullest extent, then you can create those custom links inside of Leg Builder for yourself. Or if you wanted to focus on a particular leg when you share your makeup information, like, you could also do that. Alright.
Yes, or if you want to send, you know, like, because the, the different countries and stuff like that, you know, we have a lot of people using those Leg Builder links because, of course, we do have the Country Code Picker on the top of your website. But if you really want to make sure that, say, somebody in Canada is getting the correct information for that country, you can send them a direct, the Leg Builder link so that it has that, the Canadian, what do you want to say?
Compliance aspect.
Yes, yes. A Canadian compliant website.
Perfect. Awesome. Um, let's see. So, Tony had a couple of questions. We got, we got a few really good questions here. So, Tony, when someone adds their info on a landing page, where is the info stored? So, depending on the tag that is on the landing page, which, if you're setting one up for yourself, you should definitely add a tag to it so you can see is this someone who's interested in pets? Or if you're using a landing page in kiosk mode at a, at a vendor event, you know, you say, the name and date of the vendor event is the tag, right? So that you can easily pull those people up. When people opt in, they land in the Contact Manager, right? So, when you go over here under Contacts and you hit Manage, you can see everyone who is in your Contact Manager, who you have either uploaded from the VO, and you'll, you'll know that based on tags. If it says Product/Customer, then they came from your VO, right? If they opted in on a landing page and you have a tag on your landing page, then it's going to show that. So, you can actually search for the people who opted in on your landing page at a vendor event and then send an email out to them, right? Or you could, you know, if there is a special that, that's, you know, running on, on skincare, you can find the folks who maybe opted into the landing page on that Leg Builder link that you set up with the, with the makeup theme. And so on. So, they would be a new prospect. We do have a new prospect campaign that's already set up for you. It does, it does automatically send on our sort of standard landing pages, again, unless you change the campaign, which you can do. You can copy it and then edit it. And all you have to do, if you want to go in and read what's in those messages, is just click the individual messages. It'll show you. Alright. Shelley says that she made a Leg Builder link for a new builder. She used it for a few weeks and then got her own. She said it was a great intro to GetOiling, so it's a good place to start with your team, you guys. Let's see. Alright, Marie, I hear you. Alright. Marie says, "I hear so often that most people pay little attention to emails and that texting is a better way to reach people. While I understand that there are options to reach landing page registrants via text, they must be willing to provide their phone numbers in order for that to happen. The GetOiling training seems to be email-heavy. My concern is that my communications will not be read if I'm relying heavily on email. Can you give me your perspective and experience on this topic?" Okay, most people don't pay attention to emails that they don't really care about getting. Most people absolutely pay attention, open to click on and take action on emails that they enjoy getting, that are relevant to them, that are important to them. I am subscribed to way too many email lists, right? I'm sure we all are. But whose do we open, right? We do have emails that we open. You guys are here today because you open emails from us, because you like what you hear from us, right? So, yes, you can distract someone a lot faster with text, but the real meat behind this is the substance. It's the content. And if you are providing substantively something that matters, that's relevant and that's actionable, then it doesn't matter how you reach them. It is then your goal to reach them in that meaningful way, in a way that they can have expectations around. So, they can expect to hear from you around nine or 10 o'clock on Mondays, right? And that you're going to show up with a particular kind of value to your content, a particular kind of information that is, that's really there for them. This is also why it's really important to consider that we aren't just here to promote, right? Being a Young Living distributor does not make you a promoter of Young Living, right? You can go far with that, right? But then you hit a wall. You start to hear crickets. When you become someone who is a promoter of a lifestyle shift and you can make that lifestyle shift relevant to the people that you're talking to, they're going to open every email that you send them. They're going to take every recommendation that you give them because they know that you understand them and that you provide something to them that is life-changing and that, that benefits them. So, sure, yes, open rates can be much higher via text, but that's a quantity thing, and what we're looking for is quality. You can do both with us, but email, email is not dead. A lot of, you know, texting platforms and stuff like to tell you that. We have, we have texting ourselves, and yes, open rates are statistically higher, but that doesn't necessarily mean that people do more with the information. So, people really need to, they need to hear from you, and they need to know that you hear them and that you're doing something that actually matters to them. And then they'll open any email that you send them or text and actually take action on it. That's really the important part. What are they doing with it? They can open it, but, you know, if it's a who cares, then who cares if it's email or text, right? Alright.
And you, and you can also, like, even asking them, asking your customer or your downline member, "What do you prefer, how, how do you prefer me to get in contact with you? Do you prefer texting or do you prefer email?" So, then you can keep that in mind when you are communicating with them.
And interestingly enough, there is a setting on the Contact. If you go in here to edit the Contact, for campaign messages anyway, if you scroll down over here, there's Send Campaigns by Email or Text. After you get in touch with them and they're like, "Oh, we only like email." Or, there are some people who are like, "Yeah, send it me by email and text," whatever. You can check them both. You can check one, you can check none. So, you can customize that per contact, once you know that. And that affects the campaigns that are sent out. If you're sending, like, a bulk email, it will send it by email. You know, if you come up here and say, "I want to mail everyone," it's going to send that by mail. It doesn't, it's only campaigns that follow that setting, but that lets you do that.
Yeah, and I mean, if you wanted to bypass the, the whole landing page thing to some degree, you know, you can, you can have a text encode. You could say, "Text this to, you know, to the number that you set up with GetOiling," and they can receive classes from you that way. They can, you know, receive any kind of campaign or communication from you. But they're still going to eventually have to come to a website and look at information, right? Like, they can't text in their order to Young Living. At some point, they get onto the web. And at some point, the, the email is involved. So, so you've got that option, of course. And yeah, if you, if they put their, their phone number in, which you can require if you want to do it, you can require on a landing page that they enter their, their phone number in. And there's no shame in doing that. I mean, you, you are a business person and you're trying to work with people who are serious. If they aren't willing to give you contact information, then they're probably not going to be your customer and, okay, fine, next, right? So, you can definitely make that a requirement. We did have a, ooh, two really good questions. Judith, "What is kiosk mode?" If we could show really quickly what that means. Kiosk mode is used for vendor events primarily, or where you're somewhere, you want to get rid of those, those paper signup sheets. That's what you use the kiosk mode for. So, all you do with any landing page you create is you just click Kiosk Mode, and that's the link that you use. And then, when someone logs, when they put in their information to sign up for whatever you're giving away, newsletter, information, class, what have you, then it's just going to refresh the page so that the next person can do it. So, think of it like a virtual, virtual signup sheet. Marie is asking, "Can you set the time of day that a campaign message is sent out?" Yes, this is a new thing and it's so good.
Yep, this is on the Premium and Higher Plans where you can do that. So, like, I'll go in here and, I mean, I'll pick one of these. It's got multiple messages, like this one here, maybe. And on Premium, it normally, it normally is a expanded, but if you click Advanced Features, then you can do a couple of cool things. You can, so like, Day Zero is when they sign up right away. You can delay it, either send it out right away, you can have multiple delays. But then, on Day, you know, One and beyond, then yeah, you can set a specific time of day that you want that to be sent out at. And you can even here, if you want to, on a per-message basis, choose, "Does this only go up by email? Does this only go up by text?" So, you can actually mix that back and forth, which is really cool. So, you could have an email and then maybe a text sent out the next day to say like, "Hey, did you see my email?" You know, so kind of mixing it back and forth.
Yeah, that's a really exciting thing, you guys. And that's another thing. If you have a landing page and you require text, you can let them know, and hey, by the way, you know, this is, you know, "I send half of this information via images on text, so if you don't put your phone number in, you're going to miss half of the good stuff," right? And so then, you know, you send them a text in the morning and an email in the afternoon or whatever.
Right, because if you say text only and the person, the contact doesn't have a phone number, it just skips that message. It doesn't send it at all. So, you can, it is literally, in fact, they would miss that if they don't put in their phone number, so.
Right, and, and Shelley, yes, this is on Premium Plans and up. This is a professional-level feature. And actually, I know, I've, I've worked in the digital marketing world for a long time now. I'm not aware of a platform that has this level of customization of inside the same campaign, and I'm talking about the whole digital marketing industry. I am not aware of a single place where you can find a single campaign that you can choose the time of day that it goes out and whether it goes out by email or text. It is insane. It's so cool.
Yeah, you got to buy like three apps to do that. And, you know, two apps to do, one to do emailing, probably four, one for your Contact Manager, one for emailing, one for texting, and then one to, like, connect them all together. So, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah. And, and yes, Megan, you can make the phone required on a landing page. Yes, that is, it's under the Landing Page Settings. And then, we also have those settings on custom pages that you can use as landing pages as well. See, right there. Just make sure you check Phone, and they won't be able to go to the next page or register without adding their phone number. Awesome. Marie asks if there is a time of day that is recommended generally? Well, that's, that's kind of hard to say, right? Because we are, you know, we're kind of queued up for global business. So, it depends on where your people are. And it depends on the medium that you're using to send, whether you're focusing on email versus, versus text. Generally speaking, around 9:00, 10:00 AM local time is, is a pretty solid time. And then, in, in the evenings, right, around like 5:00, 6:00 o'clock local time. Obviously, local is going to change depending on where you are. We got a broad range of, you know, where everybody's coming in from today. So, you know, 6:00 PM might be 3:00 for you, right? Or 6:00 PM might be, you know, 9:00 for you. So, it's, it's not an exact science. Again, if, if you are, if you are creating a situation wherein you are someone people look forward to hearing from, you can send them at 2:00 AM and it doesn't matter. Just don't text at 2:00 AM, maybe. That wouldn't be so good. Awesome. You guys have had so many great questions today. Diane, I, I can send that to you. Just reach out. And you were asking about the, I think, maybe the URL for that landing page. I can send that to you. Just shoot me an email, which you have. Let's see. Oh, wait, there was, in our Slack, there, there was a couple of questions pertaining to the Digital Upline Coach and a couple of other things. Let's definitely cover this really quick before we go, because I want to make sure that we cover that. Someone sent that in. Cynthia asked this.
Yes, so the one thing is, is that the one question that we've been getting asked is is that every week when we send out our email, do people need to sign up for our weekly work session every week? And no, that is not. We will, it's kind of like a reminder email. And then also, for those people that it may not be signed up, we do give that link. And then, anytime we send it out, at least, then you will know what we will be speaking about that day.
Right, right. Yeah, so if you get a promotional email about the weekly work session and you've already been on one before and you're registered, then you're good. Just look for an email from us within, within 30 minutes of our start time with the link to join. And actually, when you sign up for the weekly work session, you immediately land on a page that gives you a link that you can actually just copy or put into your, you know, your calendar or whatever and, and just hop on live, because it is the same link every week. Once you're registered, you're in, you're good to go. Just look for a reminder from us. So, let's see. Okay, so, the, "How do I sort my contacts to include the people that I signed up at X vendor event or via X landing page? I see how to exclude categories, but is there a way to only include something?" So, that's with your tag here that Greg is showing. And so, on any landing page you create, if it's for a lead magnet or if it's for kiosk mode at a vendor event, make a tag for it when you make the page. And, and that way, when you want to reach out to the people that opted in for that particular thing, all you have to do is tag, filter, and then you've got those contacts. There we go. And there it is. Perfect. Another question from Cynthia, really good, good questions here. A Digital Coach question, "Just sending someone an email count toward contact with a prospect, and is there a way to have it auto-do it when you're writing an email?" Alright, so, let's do just a really quick kind of breakdown of what the Digital Upline Coach is and purpose that it serves. The Digital Upline Coach is, it's sort of an autotracker, if you will, of, of your IPAs. And IPAs are not a whole bunch of things. They are actually a very narrow set of things. The high-value IPAs, the things that actually move the needle in your business. The purpose of this coach is to help you get real-time data on how much real value-moving time you're spending in your business. This is why email does not automatically move this little progress far forward, because sending an email is not actually technically an IPA. Is it something that can contribute toward a future high-value IPA action? Absolutely. That's the whole point of having people become leads and then warm up and then reach out, and then you decide to sit down and then you share Young Living with them, which is a huge IPA, right? So, inviting someone to review information, having them review information, following up with them on the information they reviewed, and then closing the deal. Those are your IPAs. That's it, right? So, what we've done with the Digital Upline Coach is we have sort of stratified the value of different actions you can take, and there are lower-value actions that are in here, right? Such as personal development, training, journaling, right? Getting a no from someone, because collecting a decision is a big deal, right? When somebody says no, you're like, "Cool, I'm gonna move on." That's big, right? So, so there's a whole list of these things. Sending an email is not one of them, and here's why. When you are following up with someone, When you are following up with someone, when you are inviting someone, you need to be in active communication with them. This is something that, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of old school with this. I believe this, that this should be by phone. It should be by phone. Uh, text is okay. DMs are okay, but phone is best. Because they can't ignore you when they're on the other side, right? They, uh, people can ghost you on DMs. You can say, hey, I want you to check something out. And then you give yourself credit for inviting and you don't even know, like, they, they, they haven't told you a yes or a no yet. You get credit for the activity when you've actually moved the needle. So sending out an email is great. Maybe if you do send out an invite to someone and it's personalized and they respond yes, then maybe apply credit for yourself because you have invited successfully someone to review information. But, um, but yeah, that's, uh, that's kind of the sticky thing, right? So if you think about the digital upline coach as actually a coach that's telling you what you actually really should be focusing on in your business, that's sort of what this is supposed to be. It's a, it's a tiny little unicorn on your shoulder saying like, hey, I know you're spending a lot of time making pretty newsletters, but how many people have you reached out to today? How many new people have you reached out to, gotten curious and shared Young Living with this week? Because those are the things that make your, you know, make money in your business. So that's the purpose of the digital upline coach. Obviously what we have in terms of our functionality and Get Oiling is a way for you to spend less time ultimately on the, um, on the promotional stuff, uh, on the, um, I don't know, on the teaching and the communicating and the stuff that takes a longer period of time to do and that you repeat with people over and over again, right? We hope you cut that down and just streamline what you do so that you can spend more time on these things that moves the needle with your digital upline coach, which are the things that move the needle in your business. Awesome. Cynthia, you're here with us. Awesome. Thank you for submitting your question ahead of time. By the way, you guys, if you ever feel like you can't make it to one of these sessions, send us your questions and we are happy to answer them here. Another one, the last one. Uh, Greg, how do we merge two contacts into one?
Right now it's a manual process. It's on our wishlist. So yeah, you have to maybe pull them both up side by side in a couple of browser tabs and then copy and paste what you want to merge and then delete the other one.
Perfect. Um, and then actually one more from Sheila. Is there a predefined drip campaign for prospects and product users? Yes, we have those already made. Um, and maybe, uh, could, could we show just really quickly Greg, how they can use ours as a template to make their own?
Yeah, definitely. So when you're creating a campaign, um, to, you know, to directly answer your question, there's a new prospects campaign and there's a, uh, new members campaign. So if you want to, let's, uh, it's probably on page three here. So let's say you got USA new members and you want to modify that for what you're, uh, what you want to do, put it in your own voice, add products, change images, whatever you want to do. Click this little icon here, this, uh, copy. You can click that, it'll make a copy of it. I have enough stuff in this account, so I will avoid making a copy. But once you do that, then it'll show up, you know, the created by will show up as me. And then you can come into any of these. Okay. So here's like, I must've done that here sometime ago. So here's one that is, um, a copy of the built-in one. And you can just come in here and then you can click on this and modify whatever you want. If you want to swap up images or change the text, put your signature, you know, actually with campaign emails, signatures do actually show up on the bottom of the message bodies automatically. So you don't have to put your signature in there. But, but yeah, so that's how you would do that. Make a copy of it with that little, uh, stack sheet of paper icon and then go in and edit it. And then you can put that campaign wherever you want to. If you want to set it as like the system wide default on your site, this is another little tip under contact settings. There is a general settings button here too. If you click that, you can choose the, uh, default campaign that is used, you know, from the Get Oiling default to one that you would like, you know, one that you've made. So once you've created one and the something you want, like if somebody clicks contact me, this is what's sent. If somebody clicks contact me or you're using a landing page that just says use default campaign, this is what's chosen. So you'd want to go in here and update that to, you know, if you make a modification to it. Or then, you know, so connected to your landing page or whatever you want. So. Hope that helps.
Awesome. All right. Thanks for sticking around today and asking us so many great questions, you guys. Do we have anything else we want to add before we get rolling? Amanda, Kim?
No, I think we pretty much covered a lot.
Yeah, we did. Definitely. All right. Well, you guys stay warm out there in your negative 18 degree crazy like building. I can't believe you guys live in such a cold place. Thank you all for being here and joining, uh, this, this weekly party work time and we really appreciate you. Megan says, I'm loving Get Oiling. Appreciate all your hard work. Uh, we are loving you. And, uh, and all you guys, we appreciate you. Um, look forward to seeing you back here next week. Send us the stuff you're working on. Let us see, uh, you know, if you want, uh, someone to take a look at something that you've created and give you some feedback. That's what this is for. So, um, so bring your work and, uh, let's, let's get this done. You'll have a great week.
See everybody. Thank you.
Bye.